All right.
All right. Okay, so it's 4 o'clock PM today on Monday, March 10th. My name is Councilor Steph Newton Azor. I'm presiding today as council president as Mayor Alex Johnson is out of town at the League of Mayors.
National League of Cities.
National League of Cities out in Washington DC where we hope he's, we know he's representing as well. Okay, so let's go ahead and get started at 4:01 PM and let's begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, Eric, do you want to go ahead and get started with roll call?
Yes. Counselor McLeod?
Present.
Counselor Smith?
Here.
Counselor McGee?
Present.
Counselor Newton Azor?
I'm present.
Counselor Thompson?
Here.
Counselor Montague is out of town and same for Mayor Johnson.
All right, let's go ahead and start with the first item on our agenda, which is a presentation and ceremony. So first, we're going to have the recognition for outstanding performance of Albany Shrub Hub program. Director Bailey, would you like to come up? And all the swagger coming up. I'm so excited about this as well.
Thank you. I'm really excited because we tricked the three employees into coming without knowing that they're getting recognized, so thank you. So we want, we don't do this often enough, but we want to recognize some outstanding work by three of our employees. And a little bit of background, so Albany has the need for a lot of plants. So with environmental regulations, we have to do a whole lot of vegetated facilities along the sides of the streets. I'm sure you've seen them. We also have talking water gardens. We have lots of things going on where we need plant material and it's expensive and we need specific items. And so these three on their own came up with a plan and they used a little area of our operations facility that was unused and created a garden with the native soil that was there amended with biosolid compost. They're using treated wastewater for irrigation water. They used cuttings to start the new plants and they've grown thousands of plants of various types that we can use in our facilities for free and give away at farmers markets, do educational events with them, try to educate the public on the importance of natural treatment systems, why we use them and how they work. So you're going to hear from Joe Deardorf in a little bit about a grant that they are wanting the city council to allow us to accept because their program has grown so much that we need a greenhouse and a way to store our bare root plants that will keep them viable. So the grant also has Zero Match. So it's just an amazing system, amazing program that they created and like the best things, they just did it on their own and I had no idea until it was all done. So it's not always how it goes, but in this case it is and they've done a wonderful job. So we want to recognize Joe Deardorf and Meredith Tenet and Alexander Kojin who are sitting behind me and I think Peter is gonna, has a little something.
Are you saying they got money for nothing and plants for free? Quote Dire Straits? That's incredible.
It's coming out next summer.
I love that.
Shake hands.
All right, thank you for all being here and I wanted to give you the highly coveted C of Albany coin. Thank you for your initiatives, your innovation, dedication.
She's getting a picture.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, picture time.
All right, one, two, three.
You guys, good work.
Director Bailey, before you go, Director Bailey, I apologize. Can I ask you one quick question? I too am someone that has a need for a lot of plants and I actually got one of your guys' plants during the farmer's market, but I'm curious, I know how much plants cost. Do you have an estimate of how much they've saved the city?
Oh, I think that's gonna, that's, well, I'll ask Joe to tell me.
Oh, okay, that's gonna come up during that.
Well, I think it's on the consent calendar, so maybe Joe can tell me. Thousands of dollars, but I'm not sure if you've estimated it. About $2,000.
Just this year, so every year, minimum $2,000.
And growing because every time we do a street project, we get more of these facilities, have more need for more plants. They, they'll have to be rebuilt over time, so thousands of dollars.
Yeah, especially with the East Albany Plan. $2,000 and growing, great pun. Love this.
Come grow with us.
Yes, I love it. All right, so the next item on our agenda is to accept Department of Land Conservation and Development DLCD grant for Albany Shrub Hub greenhouse and cooler construction. Joe, would you like to come up?
Thanks, everyone. So you heard a little bit about our Shrub Hub program that we've been working on and I'll just offer a few statistics for that really quickly and then what this grant entails. So just in the last year, we produced 675 container plants, which is approximately $2,000 worth of plants. This doesn't include 450 bare root shrubs that we also produced. I know there's a little bit of jargon mixed in here and I'm happy to take someone on a tour of the facility anytime to talk more about this. We produce three species of essential bioswales, sedges and rushes, four species of wild flowers for giveaways and bioswales, and we produce five species of shrubs for giveaways and large regional bioswales. Chris mentioned we're diverting waste streams. We're using composted biosolids for growing media. We're using treated wastewater for irrigation. We're using nursery containers from previous plant purchases and we're growing new plants from pruned bioswales. So some pretty cool stuff there. So this grant is for $114,880 with no cash or in-kind match required. This grant would fund the purchase and construction of a 22 by 22 foot greenhouse. It's also going to purchase and pay for the placement of an eight foot by 40 foot shipping container, which is insulated and we can retrofit it into a plant cooler, which allows us to store the plants that we grow in the nursery and we can have them on hand and more effectively send them out to project sites. It's also going to pay for routing power to these buildings. These improvements could save us $10,000 or more dollars in terms of plants that we wouldn't have to purchase anymore. In addition, we would add species of wildflowers, shrubs and trees, including Oregon white oaks, which are in decline, as well as street trees, which also cost our Parks Department a lot of money. So there's a lot of synergy to be gained with this project. And finally, the possibility to deliver plants to restoration partners for streamside restoration and projects like that.
That's excellent. Thanks for the additional information. I know we'll be voting on this during the consent agenda. Thank you so much for the additional information.
Thank you.
Okay, so sorry to move us a little bit out of order there, but let's go ahead with our next presentation, which would be Stand Against the Wind nonprofit with Rich Kellum.
Good evening, councilors. My name is Rich Kellum. I used to sit right over there, for those of you who don't know. I started Stand Against the Wind as an organization to give awards to people who come up with ways of saving the taxpayer money. When it's completed, it will be funded to a level of about $720,000. We'll produce about $30,000 to $40,000 a year of various awards. That doesn't, that's not just in Albany. That's just, you know, around everywhere. So when I came before, I also spoke with the county and the county was concerned that people might not be able to accept the money because of issues with conflict of interest. And so I got ahold of the state and described, well, it's me giving the money. The, the directors, I'm the only one that's here local and I don't get a, I don't get a boat. The closest is Olmsted and then San Diego and surprise Arizona and Oklahoma for the people making the decisions. And so when I, when I spoke to the Ethics Commission, they seemed to think that, well, it looks like there wouldn't be a problem. Each individual, of course, is going to have their own need to make sure they would check that out, but it looks like it would work fine. Much has happened since I was here last. Some of you are here and didn't used to be before and other people were now missing that were. I have a new shoulder and it works. I was very happy about that and I don't even have to medicate for it anymore. You folks were visited a little bit by Doge. You know, it's kind of like you run the ship of state of Albany and you walk over to the porthole on the side and you recognize that here's a hole, but it's dark inside and you read 16 inch 50 caliber type seven. You know, when they get to Oregon, and eventually they will, who knows what's going to happen? There will be some consternation. I guess there's two ways to deal with that. One is you just wait for it to happen and deal with it. The other is to be proactive about it. If you just wait, my little organization can't really help you if you are proactive and looking for people to have you, to tell you about how to save money. I can help by giving awards to people who come up with good ideas and that might help a little on the edges. I mean, this is not a panacea. Bottom line, from my perspective, what I think you need is your own version of Doge instead of using a chainsaw and nitroglycerin, you use a scalpel or a sawzall or, you know, something that's specific to you instead of, instead of what happens at the national level. That's really, you know, all there is. It's, will be funded, the starting of the funding happens at the end of this month. Now, I mean, the first batch of it goes to two named scholarships at, at the American Welding Society for people who want to become engineers that are now people working on a shop floor or in the military on a shop floor. But there'll be, you know, the first, the first year is going to be $5,000, $6,000 in awards. Other than that, I mean, if you have questions, I have answers or at least I have funny looks.
Council, do we have any questions? Do you have a website?
Not yet. When I have, we haven't had our first board meeting and that one is going to be in person, so we're going to have to come together. More than likely, it'll be at someplace that is warm and friendly and instead of Chicago. But it's coming.
Counselor Thompson?
Yeah, you mentioned folks in Arizona and Oklahoma. Is that like your board?
Board, yeah. Well, understand Arizona, he used to live in Philomath, longtime friend, business guy.
Okay, yeah.
San Diego, Oklahoma, I served on the Board of Directors of the American Welding Society with him and they're both people who have their heads screwed on straight.
Counselor McLeod?
Could you please give us a specific example of something that you believe would warrant one of these awards? How much that award would be and who would be the type of person who would receive it? Can you just give us an?
Sure.
Like a real life example?
Something that you, you would all understand quickly. Maple Lawn. I don't know if it was one person or five people or whatever it was, but here you have an organization that I'm sure no one voted to do what they were doing at the end of the time. I mean, here you have people who were being subsidized thousands of dollars for tuition for children who were outside of Albany. I mean, can you envision looking at your constituents and, and voting for something like that? For something that did not, you know, it saved the city a bunch of money because the school district took it over and then it was untenable for them. Something that could be, for example, you have the Carnegie Library. Libraries are not places for books, they're places for the transfer of knowledge. So now you're going to more and more electronics. I mean, the city, the school system doesn't use, doesn't use books anywhere close to the amount that they used to. Note pads or, or, not notepads, electronic pads.
My daughter's school doesn't.
Yeah?
Yeah, they use 100% books at Central Almond.
Who does?
My daughter's school.
Yeah, well, city schools. Well, there's an article in the, in the Atlantic Monthly where in Yale and Harvard, their students were complaining that they had to read the entire book. Now, this is something, books are something that people my age love and I, I will tell you, I love a hard copy, have a cup of coffee and put my feet up and, and drift off into wherever with the story. I, and I guess none of you were here when, five years ago, when I was there, I spoke of a time when my class project, when I was a senior in high school, was making a cyclotron. This is not something that most people are able to do, but I needed a lot of information. So what I did was I went to libraries. I didn't get all the information until three months later when I went to nuclear engineering at Oregon State. Five years ago, I asked for that same information from my then cellphone and it took six minutes. Now, having said that, the Carnegie Library is a wonderful place and you don't want to turn it, you know, you don't want to throw it away, but it doesn't need as many books as it used to. You don't have nearly the number of people unless you've changed. It's not open all the time. What you could have there is IT because that's where knowledge transfer is going to. You could have ADA and AVA there, have a place that they could get in, eventually put it in an elevator. If that saved the, the city money, and I think it would save some money from not having to pay AVA and ADA as much money for their needs, a person could get, and this is anybody. This is a staff member, this is a person walking down the street, any taxpayer. And I'm thinking that the, the number ought to be about $1,000. It's enough money, so if you set $1,000 in front of somebody, it's going to get their attention and that attention then could save the city some money.
Thank you for your input on that. Thank you. All right, any other questions? Counselor McGee, did you have any, any questions online?
Nope.
Okay, excellent. Thank you so much for your time. All right, let's move forward to the next item on the agenda, which is Business from the Public. Did we have anyone sign up? Thanks so much, Eric. And it would be Lisa Grotto with the Downtown Update. Come on down.
Thank you, councilors. I just wanted to give you a quick downtown update. Lisa Grotto, Executive Director of the Albany Downtown Association. Coming up on Wednesday, Mike, Mike Martin will be back and he will be presenting Nutria, the other dark meat, at the Albany Regional Museum. If you don't know, Mike Martin is the son and grandson of Nutria Ranchers here in the Valley. And so this presentation, it will be during the History Bites, which is the, from noon to 1:00 on Wednesday at Albany Regional Museum. It was a packed house the last time back in 2019, so I suggest you attend. Nutria were raised for their fur and even promoted as a delicacy, so we'll go with that. The Downtown is seeking 2025 hanging basket sponsors. We all know and love our hanging baskets, so a little help towards that is always appreciated. Individual sponsorship started $180. That is enough to sponsor one basket for the season and there are sponsorships available at business levels as well. We will be bringing back again this year our Downtown Easter Egg Hunt, which are cut out paper eggs on the windows of the downtown. It starts on April 5th and runs through Easter. The West Albany High School Accounting Department interns will be, are already in the process of getting that set up as they have each year for us. We love participating with them. I say I don't, I do have a clock. Our Meet the Neighbors this time is the Downtown Legacy Businesses. This series will run through multiple editions. No Dinks at 35 years and Hasty Freeze at 70 years are being featured this month. Shout out to our volunteer spotlight recipient this month is Christie Crawford, the one who takes so many of the beautiful photos and also is on our Board of Directors and serves as our Vice President. You may have noticed a few new parking signs around downtown, one at the base of the bridge and then also there are new ones at the Two Rivers Market to make sure people know where they can park. So there's lots of room for our customers to come to town. Our big fundraiser, Mixology Madness, is coming up this Sunday from 4 to 7 at the Flynn Block Hall. It will be a Hollywood event and this is a cocktail sampling party with 10 bartenders hidden behind the curtain for the first hour. You'll sample and then vote on your favorites and then we'll reveal who made what. The food is a taste of downtown with bites from all over downtown. Admission is $50 and the tickets are available on our website. So I thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in the council chambers that would like to speak during Business from the Public? Okay, hearing none. I'm assuming Chris Bailey doesn't ever hand up. I just saw your hand over your head. Okay, just making sure. All right, so we will go ahead and move on to our next item, which is Adoption of the Consent Agenda.
I move adoption of the consent agenda.
Second. All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, so then now let's move on to our next item, which is Business from the Council. So let's go ahead and start with Ward 1, which is Michael Thompson.
Thank you. Not much. I, I did attend and I want to thank the staff for presenting at the, we had a community conversation really focused on 205 Madison, that piece of land across from Kalapu Ya Bring and it was just great to hear citizens come out and they did all the talking and learned a bunch. Thank you.
All right, let's move on to Ward 2, Counselor McLeod.
Thank you. I also attended the community conversation where I listened eagerly to the concerns of the community regarding the property at 205 Madison and spoke with, afterwards spoke with several of them and, and that's about it. Thank you.
Excellent. Let's move to Ward 3 and let's start with Counselor McGee.
Just one thing, I will be meeting with the Deputy City Manager on Wednesday to discuss internship possibilities. There's a couple of students who have expressed intern, wanting to intern city specifically with me and so I want to go ahead and find out what we can do about that. I'm coming up soon, so I look forward to giving a update once I meet with the Deputy City Manager and get questions answered and to ensure that we are having a pipeline for LBCC students who want to learn more about how the city works. It's important that we have a space for them, especially when we're talking about growing our own workforce here.
Excellent. All right, now let's move over to Counselor Smith.
Only one thing this evening, I wanted to acknowledge the recent death of former Mayor Russ Tripp. There will be a broader statement about him at a future council meeting. He died last week at the age of 98, I believe. He was the mayor from 1965 to 1970 and had a profound effect on all aspects of Albany.
Thank you for that. Mine is, I have nothing really too much. I would love a tour of the greenhouse. I am a huge plant person. You have absolutely no idea. I jokingly say I have the best oxygen in all of Albany when my husband says we have too many plants and I say, you're welcome. Like, there's so much greenery. So I'd love a tour, absolutely a passion of mine. And then I'd like to invite the council, if you guys are willing to attend any of the track meets that are going to be happening at Boys and Girls Club, my daughter will be there. So I'm being a proud mom here. And then I had a wonderful time teaching another class through Parks Recreation. I had 15 folks at the community center learning to make cinnamon rolls and I'm here to tell you all my family secret on making the best cinnamon rolls because if you're going to do it, just, just do it. So before you put them in the oven, pour half a cup of heavy whipping cream over your cinnamon rolls before you pop them in the oven and that turns into a delightful caramel bottom onto the bottom of the cinnamon rolls. So I'm, I'm sorry, but I'm not sorry, so please try that next time. I'll, I'm emailing out my recipe, so if anyone wants it, let me know. But with that, let's move over to our City Managers Report.
Thanks, Councilor Newton. And with the idea of tours, I would like to extend an invitation to council to attend the Staff Compost Day this, this Saturday at the WRF from 9:00 to 3:00.
Did we ever end up naming it? Did we name, would we name it compost?
No, no, it's.
Toilet Brown?
Chris, want to tell me again? Up City Compost.
Okay, I guess, I guess toilet brown wasn't a winner. Is that what I'm, is that what I'm hearing? My, my weird suggestions I sent you? I'm kidding, I'm kidding.
So the work session on the 24th has been consolidated into the 26th to try to save a little bit more of your time. And along those lines, just to remind councilors and anybody watching that there are really three kinds of meetings, regular sessions, executive sessions and special sessions. We call, normally we call Mondays a work session, but that's by council practice and it's just the council's habit and practice to dive deep into subjects on Mondays and then to make decisions on Wednesdays. It doesn't mean that we can't, you can't make decisions on Monday or, or do any. It doesn't mean that we can't, you can't make decisions on Monday or, or do any, any other of your business. And then lastly, I'll tell you that I'll be gone on vacation from this Wednesday for about 12 days and Caleb Barber Perato will be acting City Manager during that time. That's all I have, but thank you.
Excellent. Well, our next meeting, so as the City Manager mentioned, we are not meeting this upcoming Wednesday, the 12th. That meeting has been canceled, but our next meeting will be on Monday, March 24th at 4:00 PM for our work session, so.
Wednesday, the 26th. So that's what, that's what I was saying.
I apologize.
That Monday has been collapsed.
So, but this Wednesday is also canceled. We've consolidated this week. But so we have Monday, March 24th as our next official meeting.
No, no.
No, no, that's what it says on our.
So this, this Wednesday is, is collapsed into today.
Okay.
And then Monday, the 24th is collapsed into the 26th.
Did that decision happen after the agendas were printed, today's agendas?
Yes, that, that was this morning.
All right, that's why I was confused. I apologize. It's the 26th. All right, so with that, we'll go ahead and adjourn at 4:30. What a quick meeting.